I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM and I'll call on councillor Hanley to read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Thorold is situated on treaty land. This land is steeped in the rich history of the First Nations such as the Hadi Wondarunk, the Anan Shoni, and the Anan Ashbe, including the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation. There are many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people from across Thoral Island that live and work in Niagara today. The City of Thorold stands with all indigenous people, past and present, in promoting the wise stewardship of the lands in which we live.
Thank you councillor Hanley. Are there any declarations of interest? I can't see it. Let me go. Okay, seeing none, adoption of the agenda. Can I get a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda as amended with item 9.2 being moved before 9.1? That's on delegations. Can I get a mover and a seconder? I got councillor O'Hara and councillor Decker. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Adoption of minutes. Can I get a mover and a seconder to adopt the open and closed minutes from the special council meeting held on Friday, July 4th, the minutes of the council meeting held on Tuesday, July 8th, and the open and closed minutes from the special council meeting held on Monday, July 14th? I got councillor DeRose and councillor Decker. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Mayor's report. On July 10th, I was joined by regional chair Jim Bradley and brought greetings on behalf of city council to the building-
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Okay, okay. On July 10th, I was joined by regional chair Jim Bradley and brought greetings on behalf of city council to the Building Bridges Powering Mobility Economic Development Conference held at the Fourpoint Sheraton in Thorold. NAGRA Region Economic Development, Investment Quebec, and the Government of Quebec Office in Toronto joined forces for a local collaborative conference focused on strengthening interprovincial economic ties. This event also included NAGRA businesses and Quebec-based companies. The marine-focused panel discussion was particularly interesting for us due to the continued success of the Thorold multimodal hub. On July 12th, I was joined by councillor DeAngela at the grand opening and ribbon-cutting of New Cad Pizza Bar and Grill located at 103 Pine Street South. Congratulations to owner Sakander Singh and much success moving forward. On July 17th, I attended the announcement by the honourable Michael Kirzner, Solicitor General Ontario at the NAGRA Detention Centre in Thorold South. Also in attendance was MPP Sam Oosterhoff and regional chair Jim Bradley. There will be a 50-bed extension to the current facility in Thorold, raising the number of beds from 272 to 322. The province is spending $180 million over three facilities, including Thorold, and increasing the number of beds by 150 plus the necessary additional staffing and other resources. On July 20th, Thorold Healthcare Services held their grand opening and ribbon-cutting at 62 St. David's Street West, their location in Thorold. Deputy Mayor Dede Vides presented Zasima Persia and Janet Tan of Thorold Healthcare Services with a certificate recognizing their grand opening. Councillors Decker, Sentence, DeAngela, and Regional councillor Whelan were also in attendance. We wish them much success moving forward. The Thorold Elite Track Club put on a dominating display on July 19th and 20th weekend at the Athletics Ontario U-14, U-16, and U-18 Provincial Championships held in Brampton. Competing against more than 1,500 athletes, Thorold Elite Track Club athletes broke four provincial records, garnered 40 medals, and swept the provincial titles in the U-14, U-16, and U-18 categories for the second straight year. Congratulations. As well, four Thorold Elite Track Club athletes were named to the Team Ontario squad, which will compete in the Legion Youth National Track and Field Championships in Calgary, Alberta, held from August 8th to 10th. Congratulations goes out to Wes Derwinski, who placed second at the North American Professional Strongman Competition held in Victoriaville, Quebec, July 23rd through 27th. Another great performance by Wes. Kudos go out to councillor Sentence, who rescued Sandy and Tom Kovak's dog Sasha that has escaped from the Van Strellen Griffiths Dog Park on Beaver Dam's Road. He also reported a gap problem with the fence, which was addressed in short order by city staff. Councillor Sentence and his daughter luckily happened to be in the dog park with their own family dog. Sandy Kovak said, and I quote, "I am so thankful for the quick acts of Mr. Sentence in saving Sasha and his diligence in making sure the necessary repairs were done so this would not happen again." We are not residents of Thorold, but the acts of Mr. Sentence speaks volumes about the care, consideration, and respect he provides to everyone visiting Thorold. Over 92,000 was raised through the Fourth Annual Mountain View Lemonade Day for Fax Niagara to send kids to summer camp. That is enough to send more than 400 children to camp for an estimated 600 weeks of summer fun. Thank you Niagara and thank you City of Thorold for your continued support. This is an important initiative, Kids Helping Kids. On July 25th, I presented a certificate of recognition to Thorold resident and Our Lady of the Holy Rosary Elementary School student Saish Bhavazhar for achieving first place in Junior B Singles at the Canadian Racquetball Championships. Congratulations for your dedication to sport and the positive example of sportsmanship you bring to our community. Saish also played on the 2024 Thorold OBA Champion Baseball Team. On July 30th, CAO Manoj Dalwaria and I attended the Greater Niagara Chamber of Commerce Spotlight Event featuring the honourable Vic Fidelli, Minister of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade, held at the Stone Mail Ballroom in St. Catherine's. He discussed the tariff situation, interprovincial trade, trade opportunities outside of the United States, and provincial programs which will support businesses affected by tariffs. On July 31st, I was joined by CAO Manoj Dalwaria and Regional councillor Whelan at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Allenberg Estates at their model home located on Lot 1, Anchor Road, Allenberg. Phase 1 consists of 22 lots. These are all custom-built homes. On August 2nd, I was joined by councillors Decker, Sentence, and Regional councillor Whelan at the 40th Anniversary Event for Big Red Market, held at their store located on 206 Richmond Street, Thorold. Congratulations to John Hesels, Dan Timmins, and your team on 40 years and continued success moving forward. Not only is their business successful, they continue to give back to the community and this support is greatly appreciated. Thank you councillor Hanley for attending the Education Foundation NAGRA Golf Classic held at Rolling Meadows Golf Club in NAGRA Falls. On August 2nd, I along with other dignitaries attended the NAGRA Fiesta Extravaganza 2025 held at Fireman's Park in NAGRA Falls. The NAGRA Festival Extravaganza is an annual summer event that celebrates Filipino heritage in the NAGRA region and across Canada. The festival aims to provide an avenue to recognize the achievements of the Filipino community and has contributed to the social and economic fabric of Canada. This event was organized by the Ontario Festival of Culture, Arts, and Sports. Thank you to their president, Riza Gatbanton, who is a Thorold resident, for the invitation to attend the opening ceremonies. On August 8th, deputy mayor Dede Vides presented a certificate on behalf of city council at Hotel du Schaefer's 20th Anniversary BBQ Event, held in the Healing Garden located at 541 Glenridge Avenue in St. Catherine's. On Monday, August 11th, CAO Manoj Dalwaria and I attended an important fundraising announcement. The honourable Kinga Sirma, Minister of Infrastructure Ontario, was joined by the honourable Trevor Jones, Minister of Agricultural Food and Agribusiness, as well as MPP Sam Oosterhoff, to announce funding for six projects in the NAGRA region through the Housing Enabling Water Systems Fund. This announcement took place at the Niagara Falls Water Treatment Plant in Niagara Falls. The City of Thorold will be receiving approximately $4.1 million towards the Claremont Street-Sullivan Avenue project. On behalf of the City of Thorold, I would like to extend our sincere gratitude to Minister Sirma and premier Ford for their significant investment through the Housing Enabling Water System Fund. This funding represents a crucial step forward for our community and reflects a shared commitment to smart planning, responsible infrastructure investment, and long-term community wellbeing. In closing, the Thorold Community Market and BIA Car Show continues each Wednesday from 5:00 to 9:00 PM through the end of August. Two special shows, Night Fever, the number-one Bee Gees tribute band, is headlining the market on August 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and British Invasion Tribute Band on August 27th, also from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. These will be two excellent shows. Come out and show your support for this great community event. And that's the end of my mayor's report. That's yours? Okay, now we're going to move on to presentations. And as mentioned, we're going to move 9.2 forward, which is the Thorold Nonprofit Housing Corporation. I'll call on John Kenny, Chair of the Thorold Municipal Nonprofit Housing Board, for your presentation regarding an update respecting this housing development for seniors located on Baker Street. John, you have 10 minutes for your presentation and I know you told me you won't be using the full 10 minutes. Is that true?
You don't mean Terry. Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Thorold Nonprofit Housing Corporation and I want to- Cut a slide. Introduce you to our newest project at 5 Baker Street that we're now going to start leasing on in November. I'm here with Don Dobie and Joe Atkinson from our committee. And also, I want to mention our councillors, councillor Ken Sentence and councillor Mike Dede Vides, that work with us throughout the four years and help with the build. One other thing I do have to mention is city Jeff Holman, Steve Santo, and Sean Dunsmore have been very helpful with us along the way, okay? So thank you for your help. So this thoughtfully-designed five-story building in a peaceful location is ideal for 55-plus community. It offers one- and two-bedroom open concept with a fresh, modern look, perfect for seniors looking to feel connected and right at home. Next slide, please. Every unit has its own private balcony. The building is fully equipped with two elevators to ensure easy access to all the floors. Accessibility has been a top priority. We have some accessible units available with lower countertops and stove tops with walk-in showers. All are designed to make daily living more comfortable and easier for individuals with mobility challenges. There are some, there are common spaces on each floor, so there'll be common lounges on the third and fifth floor and to provide the tenants with space for social events and gatherings, activities, whatever. Also on, for their convenience, on the second and the fourth floor, that'll be equipped with laundry facilities with easy-to-use tap-pay technology. Additional features in the building, there'll be a bike and storage with charging stations on the ground floor, and there'll be onsite tenant and visitor parking. Next slide, please. So the units themselves will be $1,650 for a one-bedroom. That includes everything except your hydro, and the one-bedroom is 2,050 plus hydro. So your Wi-Fi is included with cable and one parking spot. We have a limited addition, we have a limited number of one-bedroom affordable units still available, and we are having an open house this Saturday, August 16th. You'd have to call 61 Orman at 905-227-6628 to book an appointment to go through and look at these units. We had a lot, I have to say, we had a large list. We went through the list. Only half the spaces are rented. We've only advertised in Thorold. With a finished date of November 1st, we tried to fill it with Thorold residents only, but we're going to have to open it up if we don't, obviously if we don't fill it. Something to keep in mind, many people from Thorold I talked to, they came, they said, "Well, you know what, John, I'm not quite ready. I'm maybe a year or two away from moving into a spot like this." My answer to that is, you know what, there's a 10-year, eight-to-10-year waiting list for these places, okay? So if you're ready in two years, this is your opportunity. I'm trying to tell people from Thorold that because it's not two years from now I'm ready and there'll be a place for you because there might not be. You go on the region list and you get the next opening. It might be Stony Creek, it might be Fort Erie, it might be Thorold, but you get the next opening. That's the way it works. One thing the city is doing, they're building a nice park around the corner from this for that their residents be able to use. Any questions?
Okay, thank you for your presentation, John, and I'll open the floor up for any questions from council. Go ahead councillor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, John, for coming tonight and giving us this presentation. Just wanted some clarity, John. Are there one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and affordable units that are still available?
Yes, so we have two-bedroom accessible, two-bedroom that are not accessible. By accessible, it means the wheelchair can go up to the counter, the dials for the stoves are in the front, and also the showers are accessible. There's no like tub in them.
Okay, so basically, as we speak tonight, there's all different units available, so-
There's four different types, one-bedroom, one-bedroom accessible, two-bedroom, two-bedroom accessible. Right now, as we speak, there's some of everything available.
Yeah, okay, that's good news because I was under the impression that this was basically sold out, but I think if people are-
Well, you know what, we had a lot of people, like I say, come through and a lot said, "I'm not quite ready." Some to do with the housing market, right? People are afraid that, you know, they go in here, they can't sell their house. So, but having said that, seniors are going to have to make a choice because like I say, once it fills-
Okay, well, thanks for getting the word out so nobody has an excuse now if they want one, they should be-
No, and so it's 61 Orman across from the beer store in Thorold. If they want to go in and book an appointment for this Saturday to go through it, I mean, if anybody wants to go through it, you just go there, book an appointment, and it'll be from 9 till, we're starting to book the appointments at 9. We have 9 till 2 open, but obviously, we're not going to stay there till 2 o'clock if we don't have that many appointments.
Yeah, so how many total units is it? Sorry.
Six, there's 60 units.
60.
Thirty-two bedroom, 31 bedroom.
Okay, so how many are rented out as of today?
I would say 30.
30, okay.
Pretty evenly split. I'm not sure of the accessible and-
Yep, got it. Thanks, John, thanks for coming in.
Councillor Sentence, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Thanks, John, for coming in. Joe, Karen, Eddie Senior, Don, the whole board. I'll get to a question, but the unpaid hours these people put in to make this happen and pass people on it are just incredible. I want to thank you. And my last question, my question will be to you, what's next, John?
I'll ask the mayor when we're getting that land to build the next project on.
Well, I think that's something we need to work together on because I think it's something that's important for the community.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead councillor Dede Vides and then I'll get councillor Decker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, John, for coming in. It's been a great experience being part of this board. The building looks fantastic and excited about it. But I want you to tell people, when's the completion date so people out there know when to move in?
Well, the completion, the move-in date right now is November 1st. We had a meeting Monday and Nyackon, who is building it for us, are adamant that we're going to be ready for move-in November 1st.
That's fantastic. This is such a great, a great news story for Thorold. Thank you.
Councillor Decker, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, John, for coming in. I was lucky enough to get a tour of the building and it's quite a lovely building. I hope that people come out to have a look because if that's what they're looking for, I'm sure that they'll really love what's been done there. I just, you mentioned the affordable housing units that are available. Although, are they all spoken for yet or are there still some available?
No, there's some of those available. Excuse me, the board doesn't get involved with that, of course. You provide your financials to the office and they go through and they let people know what they qualify for.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Go ahead councillor O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to John. John, thank you so much to the Thorold Nonprofit Housing. I've been watching this building go up. I know it's been quite a journey. There's been road bumps along the way, but it's really great to see that you're nearing the finish line. Well done. The building looks great. I'm sure you'll fill up all those spots soon, so congratulations to all your hard work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Sentence, did you want to say anything? Again, your hand's still up or?
Yeah, just one other thing, maybe through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Chair. John, even people who came last time, we didn't have stuff like appliances in and they couldn't get a real good feel. So if anybody's listening, maybe come back and you might see that there's more space than you thought or it might, it looks a lot more finished now, so maybe John can speak to that.
We did have an open house earlier and some of the people were saying that they couldn't, the fridges and stoves weren't there, but now we're closer to completion. So the four units that we're showing on Saturday, the fridges and stoves are in place, the flooring's all done, everything, everything's done completely in these four units.
Okay, anyone else?
Okay, thank you very much for your time. Much appreciated.
Thank you, John, and thank you to the board as well, and thank you for the work these do. Okay, so now we're going to move on to 9.1, which is the Thorold Solar Project Proposal for IESO LT2. I'll call on Kevin White, Government Relations and Development, Electra Energy Solutions, for their presentation regarding the Thorold Solar Project Proposal. And you have 10 minutes for the proposal and then we'll have questions after that.
Staff, councillors, mayor, thank you very much for having me this evening. I'll wait for the slides to come on screen. Yes, thank you very much. You can go to next slide. So I'll start with the agenda of this brief presentation. So I'll start with who we are, Ontario's energy needs, why I'm standing here today, the ISO's long-term LT2 procurement process, which I'm going to be discussing, the proposed project that we're hoping that we can put forward into this upcoming procurement, and then next steps afterwards. So as I said, my name is Kevin White, Government Relations with Electra Energy Solutions. I'm joined by my colleague, with my colleague David Anders, who's also with AES. For those who are not familiar with Electra, obviously, most people know it as the utility provider. So Electra Energy Solutions is a sister company to Electra Utilities. We are the commercial competitive side of the company. We operate separate from the utility, but we are all under the Electra Inc. umbrella. I think Electra Utilities service territory actually ends right across the street over here, actually, directly across the street. And AES actually has quite the presence in Niagara, obviously being the LDC, Local Distribution Company for St. Catherine's. St. Catherine's is a shareholder of Electra Inc. But AES ourselves are working with Niagara Transit on the electrification of the transit system throughout Niagara. So, and there's some statistics around who Electra is. We are a municipally-owned company, second-largest municipally-owned energy company in North America, largest in Canada. We have about 1.1 million customers in the utility side of things, about 4 million people under the Electra umbrella itself. AES, what we do is mostly the commercial side of things, obviously, so we work with municipalities, with institutions, businesses, to come up with unique energy-tailored products for them. So that could be anything from EV chargers to behind-the-meter battery systems, rooftops, solar, the whole front-end offering there. Right now, we have about 100 different generation sites across Ontario, about 95 of those are solar. In a previous ISO procurements, we won three battery projects, and all three of those are currently under construction in Guelph and in Vaughan. So why I'm here today is to talk a little bit about Ontario's energy needs. So the IESO, which is the Independent Electricity System Operator, it's a division of the provincial government, their job is to balance the power across the province, make sure that everybody has enough power, but also forecast what the energy needs are going to be in the future and then also procure those resources. So over the last few years, number of years, the ISO has begun to predict that the growth in demand is going to escalate quite quickly to the point where we are going to start seeing shortfalls in our electricity in the next couple of years. Now, to deal with that, they are undergoing a number of procurements to bring new energy resources online with a big focus on renewable energy, obviously, but this upcoming procurement, it is technology agnostic, so there will be a number of different projects that are put forward into this RFP. In fact, today and yesterday, I think are going to be, once the statistics are finalized, top 10 in the province's history in terms of energy demand, to the point where we were having to import energy into the province, which is something we normally don't have to do. We are normally an exporter of energy. And this is a trend that we're seeing, we are seeing at Electra throughout our own service territory, but also across the province, that demand is going to continue to rise as electrification becomes the norm, new businesses move in, and then natural population growth as well. So in order to meet this demand, the ISO has launched a number of procurements. Right now, we are under the LT2 procurements, and despite the number, it's actually the third one. So there's ELT1, LT1, now we're on LT2. LT2 itself was one RFP, but then it was broken up into four annual procurements. We are in window one. What we are talking about today is the energy generation procurement. That RFP is due October 16th. There's a whole separate RFP for energy capacity, so that would be like batteries and gas generation on a different timeline, a different stream. That's not what we're talking about this evening. We're talking about the energy generation capacity procurement. So the ISO is going to be procuring about 7,500 megawatts of power over the next four years, and this is to help mitigate some of those demands that we're going to be seeing in the foreseeable future. So over the last number of months, we've been working with the Hamilton-Oshawa Port Authority, who is in partnership with Bioveld here in Thorold. They have a piece of land that is otherwise not usable. It is a landfill, paper pulp landfill, and we thought it would be very suitable for a project, a solar project, that we would like to put forward into this upcoming procurement. So we have finalized an option to lease agreement with Bioveld and HOPA. We have partnered, we have brought on a partner, Kruger Energy, so a very established energy company based out of Montreal, who is going to be- energy company based out of Montreal, who is going to be partnering with us on this. We're in discussions with Six Nations of the Grand River, who are a longstanding partner of AES, to bring them on board as an equity partner on this project as well. That is still being finalized, but those discussions are certainly going on. The project that we're looking to put forward is a 10-megawatt solar project, so we'd need approximately 40 to 50 acres of land. You would have to adhere to all the proper permitting and site plan approvals and whatnots. We're going through what the site layout would actually look like at this point, and we're hoping that, you know, this evening, we can get municipal support in principle, so we can proceed to the actual submission of the RFP. The lands themselves would, would cause minimal disruption to the local community environment. Like I said, it's an unused parcel of land, currently a landfill that we would be capping and putting solar panels on top, is surrounded by trees. It would be very, solar obviously doesn't make noise, you wouldn't be able to see it, and the interconnect is actually onsite, so we'd be able to connect into the lines that are onsite and export the power to the provincial grid. So, in terms of next steps, and the reason why I'm here this evening, the ISO has mandated this round, which is different from previous procurement rounds, that we obtain what's called the Municipal Support Resolution. This is essentially support in principle for the project that we're putting forward. I'm looking over at planning staff, because I know they're having heartburn around what support actually means and approval actually means. It is not an approval of the project. If we were to actually win the project, we'd still have to, we'd start from day one, site plan, rezoning, site plan, permitting. That's all afterwards if we actually win the project. What the ISO is looking for here is for the municipality to support in principle what we are trying to do, so we are able to actually submit into the RFP. If we do not get municipal support before the RFP deadline, submission date, we cannot put the, we cannot, we cannot actually submit the project into the RFP itself. So, with that, looking at the timeline below, we are about two months out from the submission deadline. So, I'm hoping that this evening, we can obtain municipal support so we can actually proceed into this procurement. So, with that, thank you very much for listening, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm going to open the floor up to council for questions. Go ahead, councillor De Rose.
Yeah, through, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, just a couple of quick questions. Can you just explain, I'm looking at the motion for tonight. Can you just explain eight and nine, nine A to D? It's on the last, second page of the motion. Are you able to, are you able to bring, someone able to bring that up? Just the last attachment.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I can, to address councillor De Rose's comment, I'll, I'll put up a motion that has just a few pieces of information added to it, including that chart that Mr. White has filled out.
It's, in my package, it's the second page of the motion. So, if you go to number seven, I mean, eight and nine, last, I said, the next page. I just need some clarification on that. We can come back to America. No, I'm just finding it here. Yes, for me, just eight and nine, you can just clarify. I appreciate, thank you.
Yeah, so, for, when it comes to prime agricultural areas, the ISO has a blanket ban for this procurement on citing solar projects specifically on agricultural lands. So, you know, in the official plan, if your official plan says that these, this is a prime agricultural area, you're not allowed to cite projects there. The zoning of this, this one is M4, if I'm not mistaken. It's a rural industrial zoning. That's outside of any prime agricultural area. That's something from the ISO itself. And then, number nine... Does include lands designated, sorry. So, the project ones are not designated, okay. Yeah, so, these lands themselves are a landfill itself, designated industrial, so non-prime ag.
Does that answer your question, councillor? Because it's, it's agr, it's not agricultural land, and it's not going on a rooftop.
Yeah, it's just a little confusing reading. If you can clarify any further features, you know, I'd be great, thank you.
Yes, so...
No, no, you can go finish up before you...
I can, I can answer that, actually. So, number nine, that, when it, where it says where municipalities do include agricultural lands, that's actually the template ISO MSR document. That is dealing with like wind and battery projects that are allowed on there. In this case, that actually would not apply, because it is, the lands are not agriculture, but they do have like a whole separate, separate criteria for agricultural lands for different types of energy projects.
Thank you. Is there, is there any direct or indirect hazards that would put any Thorold residents at risk? Keep in mind that most of Thorold is within a nine-meter distance from the site that you're proposing.
Yeah, no, we, so, in order for us to actually proceed with all of this, we go through the entire approval process, including environmental. So, environmental is one of the, you know, one of the first due diligence that we do. The capping itself, capping of the landfill, you know, would be done with, you know, through engineering firms and whatnot. We'd go through a full environmental assessment to ensure that, you know, any solar that's cited there is properly cited. There's different ways that you can cite solar. So, you can either drill down into the ground and, you know, have piles, basically, or you can have a ballasted system where it basically just sits on top. So, there's difference, and this is also not the first time that solar has been put on landfills. It's actually quite common, because it's a very good use for it. So, in terms of risks, I would say very minimal to none, you know, given the amount of work that needs to be done in order to actually get approvals, not only from the municipality, but the province itself.
Kevin, have you had any issues at all in any of your other plans in regards to what I'm speaking of? As you said, it's almost minimal to none. Has there been any issues, any direct or indirect hazards in the areas of your present locations?
No.
Just last question. Can you just reiterate what giving approval in principle means tonight? I know you stated that, but I just want everybody to hear it again.
Yes. So, this is, this is, I'll, I'll give a kind of a high-level view as the thinking around this. So, in previous iterations of the LT procurement, the ISO said you can get bonus points on your submission if you get municipal approval in principle. So, if the municipality supports what you're doing, you can get bonus points. Municipalities gave feedback in, on that and said, no, they actually want a bit more say in which projects are cited in their municipalities, given that this round, there's a lot more diversity in the types of energy projects that are moving forward. So, the ISO then said, okay, so if proponents want to actually compete in this RFP, the municipality needs to agree that the project that's being put forward is a project that they would support, right? So, it doesn't mean that, you know, we will come back and say, oh, we got your support, now we can just go start building. It means that we are actually allowed to step up to that start line, compete in the RFP, and then if we are awarded a project in 2026, we either come back to the municipality and start our actual development process, so rezoning, site plan permits, and everything.
Basically, just part of the process.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Councillor Hanley, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I, I'll, I'll support what you requested. I actually worked on a solar farm myself before, large-scale, one hole in the road and 20. But this is a 10-megawatt project? Is that what you're wanting to do?
Correct. So, we're, that's the capacity. Our projects' sizes are limited to how much the capacity at the closest substation has, and this one has 10 megawatts.
Okay, because I'm just asking, because that's actually, you know, it only actually would power 133 to 250 electric vehicles, just to give you a current, because one megawatt is 1,000 kilowatt-hours, and a, and a high-end charger in an EV is 350 kilowatt-hours. So, in reality, we're going to need a lot of these solar panels around by 2035. We're going to all be driving electric cars, you know. So, the reality of what happened is nil and none. But I do support the, the project on that thing. And I do believe it's actually, the material that it's on was one time the sludge that was the remnants, the process of making pulp and making paper, I believe?
Yeah.
That's what it is? And that, it's on a landfill site. Is the area contaminated? And I'll be honest with you, upfront, I asked that because I know that material was removed from that site at one time and was taken to other sites. And as, I was a councillor at the time, and we had to get special permission for the trucks to bring the material back to that site, because it had been put on areas that was determined to be contaminated because using the recycled paper and the dye and that stuff that was in the paper had PCBs in it. So, is there a contamination aspect of it there? Because that's what it was. That was at the same time when they cleaned out the effluent, if you remember, behind the canal. There used to be the effluent pipe that went from there into Beaver Dams, and they set up a filtration plant on the other side when Ted was mayor.
And they still monitor the leachate there.
Okay.
And as part of this project, they're going to actually put a firm cap on...
Like a clay cap?
Well, I'm guessing, I don't know.
Something like a landfill site. Actually, I support it. I actually brought up here at one time, we're actually doing the same thing at a landfill site that the city of Thorold has, that we pay yearly out on Rice Road, but they said at the time, the ground was unstable. So, maybe we could do a little joint venture here down the road.
I brought it up.
And get you to go over and check on that property and see if it's actually feasible to put a solar panel farm on, because I did bring that forward to council one time.
I, I brought it up. I think it's not big enough. That's the problem, if I'm not mistaken.
We're happy to take a look at it, because there might be alternative uses for it.
How many acres is that property? Does anyone know?
Rice Road is a good-sized piece of property.
Because I know they need roughly 40 acres.
Back in the Paul Mount Creek, yeah. But just to bring food for thought.
Food for thought.
So, I support it, though.
I've got two councillors online, but I'll first go to councillor O'Hair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to Kevin. Thanks for coming in, Kevin. It's a great project. I hope we'll be seeing many more. We're going to need them for sure as we wean ourselves off of fossil fuels. So, there has been some talk about the site and the contamination, and, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned capping it, but is that already a decided position to take? Will there be any cleaning of the area before it gets capped, or are we just talking about capping and keeping everything?
I will turn that over. I think he's talking about camp, capping, am I correct?
Yeah, so the idea is we would cap the landfill itself to ensure that it is compliant with all the provincial and whatever other standards, environmental standards are out there. And then, as I mentioned, there's, you know, capping, putting solar in capped landfills is not something new. It's, there's many different ways that you can do it. You know, in, in this case, we, you know, you could drill down if it's, if it's feasible. We would do environmental assessments to define the best way to do it. Another one is that ballasted system, which kind of just sits up, which allows for, you know, less disturbance. But these are all, these are all, you know, this is all part of the process that we're going through right now to kind of determine the best layout and the best, the best, you know, type of project that we can put into this RFP.
Great. It sounds really good. If fall goes well, when would you hope to start something like this?
So, in terms of the timelines, the submission date is October 16th. The ISO said six months after that is when contracts will be awarded, so we're anticipating April of next year. As soon as we're awarded the contract, we have about 30 days to actually sign the contract with the ISO. You know, once that is done, we'll be, you know, knocking on your door to try and get, you know, our permitting approvals to actually get building this thing. We do need to have it operational by 2030, so that would be the absolute latest. But given, you know, it is, the grand scheme of things, it is a smaller solar project, and we're hoping that we could get it online, you know, one or two years prior to that.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for coming in.
Councillor Sentence.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Thank you, Kevin, for the presentation. I think most of my questions have been answered. But, so this is just first step, correct?
Correct.
And we're, in the future, we'll be looking at if there, if it would affect any local residents and looking at safety and all that stuff through the process, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the only thing I want to say is this, this is the perfect spot for this. This is high on a hill, sun all day, and when we were talking about the gas plant, you know, wanting to do something, we were a little iffy on fumes. This, to me, is the perfect. I said it then. We can do better, and this is, this is better to me. So, I'll support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor De De Vitas, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kevin, for coming in. I have a couple of questions. How many jobs do you think we'll get out of this in Niagara? Are there good-paying jobs? I know there'd be some people to construct this, to be jobs, because we really, really need a kick to get our jobs going in Niagara.
Yeah, so, when it comes to, there's, you know, the good and the bad with solar, obviously. So, the good is, there's a lot of that upfront work that needs to be done, you know, the capping of the landfill itself, and then, of course, bringing in the workforce to actually construct the, the site itself. The firms that we use, who are looking at, you know, to actually construct these things out, they use an Ontario-based workforce, and we try and prioritize local as much as we possibly can. In terms of the ongoing maintenance, like I mentioned, we try and prioritize local as much as we possibly can for, you know, the, whether it's electricians or even just basic site maintenance and whatnot. We'll look for, you know, local vendors to try and to do that work as, as best we can.
And the end-of-life panel disposal. Do you guys, are you responsible for that?
Yes.
Is another party going to step in and do that? We don't want to get stuck with this in 40 years down the road.
No. So, Electra Energy Solutions, we don't sell off any of our assets. We still have...
That's good.
Yeah, so, of the 95 sites that we have, you know, some of them are a bit older, but we own and operate all of them. It'd be the same with this. So, the contract with the ISO is a 20-year contract, but because of technology, solar technology has come so far, you know, these assets can last 30, 35 years. So, the idea would be to try and recontract them with the ISO or the, or the market itself, the electricity market itself, you know, beyond that 20-year, initial 20-year period. But if we were to finish out that 20-year period, the onus would be on us to decommission the site, so to remove all of the, the solar panels themselves, and, and return the site to as best we possibly can to how we found it.
Well, that's great. I'm definitely going to support this. Ontario needs all the power possible if we're going to compete. The manufacturing has to grow, and we need power. So, this is a very, very important topic, and I'm glad you bring it to Thorold.
Thank you, councillor De De Vitas. Go ahead, councillor De Angela.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of my questions have been answered, and again, I was thinking of Rice Road when I was looking at this project. One question I do have, because you mentioned that you'll probably go with a capping method. Is there any opportunity or any thought process given to mining the methane gas there, to use that in the, in the power plant that's there? Because I know they do get methane gas from Walker's facility, but is there any opportunity there?
I, I'll be honest with you, councillor, is I'm not sure what, if there is methane gas coming from there, or what type of gas is, but that's certainly something that we can take away.
There's none.
There's none.
The methane gas coming from the project ended years ago. No, that, thank, thank you for that. I didn't know if there's any opportunity there, but that was my only question.
Yeah, I'll definitely support it at this stage. We still have a lot more work to do,
and also to make sure the residents in that area are familiar with what's going to happen going through the, the rest of the process. So, this is a first step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, councillor Longham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are these questions just for the presenter at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. White, for coming in. I'm generally supportive of this, but I do have a question about your timeline here. October 16th is when you need to submit your proposal?
Into the, yes, that's the RFP deadline.
Okay. So, if, if, if we delayed a, an improvement in principle for another month, would you still be okay with that?
So, there is a lot of work that needs to be done prior to actually moving this forward. And because municipal support is a requirement, there's a lot of investment in terms of, you know, engineering work and whatnot that is needed to actually build out these projects. Getting municipal support sooner is just, is that checkbox that we can, you know, you have some comfort in knowing that it's there. Delaying the process, you know, it, it does put a bit of a risk on, on us as to whether the project would actually move forward or not, but we'd still need to... the project would actually move forward or not, but we'd still need to make those, you know, those large investments into the engineering and the site work to still prepare the document itself, which is why tonight I'm requesting municipal support.
Okay. Again, I'm going to say I'm generally supportive. It sounds like the rest of council is supportive of it. For those of us who've been around here a while, we've been down this path before, and there's really been no, and I'm not saying we need public consultation, but this was just, came in front of me a couple of days ago, and there's some questions that people are asking me, so I'll leave my other comments and questions to staff. Thank you very much, though, for the presentation.
Thank you. Is there any further questions for the presenter? Go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, through you. Kevin, have any of your plants ever been, ever failed or shut down or for any reason or, or all of them since you guys initiated a project still standing or still operating? Thank you.
I'll call my colleague David to answer that.
Yes, thank, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So in terms of our solar projects, they are primarily a lot of rooftop projects. So I'd say the, the areas where we've had issues with them have been more to do with the condition of the building, vandalism, things like that, but, you know, we've had no other issues. I mean, we are, as, as sister company to a utility, we take the integrity of our assets and our maintenance very seriously, you know, in addition to safety and security and things like that. So we would, obviously, it's in our interest to maintain the site and have it performing over the course of its contract. We are, you know, under contract to the ISO to produce the power and, and obviously keep that asset viable as long as we can to get, to get a return on it. Like Kevin mentioned, our model is to own and operate over the long term. So we, we would definitely look to maintain it to a high standard and also maintain the security of the site.
Thank you. And just one last question. Do you guys have any support from communities you're in, such as Vaughan? Do you guys have any letters of recommendation or just anything that supports, that you're in good standing with the communities where you are operating presently? Thank you.
Is there any further questions for the presenters?
So I'd say, given that we are a municipally-owned company ourselves and our municipalities, the, you know, our shareholder municipalities are our board, you know, we report up to them, which ultimately those mayors who sit on our board are then accountable to their councils and to the public themselves. So it is a circle of accountability there. We are certainly in good standing with all of our municipalities. You know, they've supported projects within their own municipalities, which I think sends a very strong message on, you know, how, how much they, they trust us and how they support us in our efforts, our efforts.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, I want to thank Kevin and David for the presentation, and we'll bring the motion forward.
Thank you.
Hey? Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anybody from the public that's going to speak or?
Well, the motion's going on the floor. There is, there is no one from the public that's speaking.
Is it, is it like a public meeting or?
No, the public meeting is for the planning issue.
Thank you.
Okay. One second. Okay, have you got it? Okay. Can I get a mover and seconder for the motion, and then we'll open up the floor for discussion? I got councillor O'Hare and councillor Decker, and the motion's on the screen. Go ahead.
Whereas the proponent is proposing to construct and operate a long-term energy project located on municipal lands as defined and with the characteristics outlined in the table below, under the long-term two-energy supply, window one, request for proposals, L2, LT2E1RFP issued by the Independent Electricity System Operator, that's IESO. Whereas capitalized terms not defined herein have the meanings ascribed to them in the Whereas the proponent has, no later than 60 days prior to the proposal submission deadline, delivered a pre-engagement confirmation notice to an applicable local body administrator in respect of the municipal project lands that includes the details outlined in the table below, except for the unique project ID, which should only be required as part of the pre-engagement confirmation notice if available. And whereas pursuant to the L2TE1RFP, if the long-term energy project is proposed to be located in whole or in part on municipal project lands, the proposal must include municipal support confirmation, which may be in the form of a municipal resolution in support of proposal submission. Now therefore be it resolved that. The council for the city of Thorold supports the submission of a proposal for the long-term energy project located on the municipal project lands, provided that all legislation, local policies and regulations are followed and understanding that the project is contingent on the approval of all required land use planning approvals, including but not limited to zoning and official plan amendments. The resolution's sole purpose is to satisfy the mandatory requirements of section 4.2 C3 of the L2TE1RFP and may not be used for the purpose of any other form of approval in relation to the proposal or long-term energy projects or for any other purpose. The proponent has undertaken or has committed to undertake indigenous and community engagement activities in respect of the long-term energy project to the satisfaction of the municipality, and the municipal project lands does not include lands designated as prime agricultural areas in the city of Thorold's official plan.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, so any questions now? Go ahead, councillor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked about the dates and, for approval, and I'll be upfront. The reason for that is, as you know, the city has an environment, climate change and biodiversity advisory committee. And, and again, it sounds like council's very supportive of this, but we ask these volunteers and community members to be part of committees, and I believe this is something that they should have some input on. So I'm going to ask tonight that we delay a decision here until our September 9th meeting. That would give us time to have a meeting and get some input from that group. That would also give us time to get some public input if there's people listening, because this was kind of brought up really quickly on Thursday. A lot of people are on holidays, people may not be aware of this. And again, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with this. It's, it sounds like a great idea to me, but what do I know? And you, Mr. Mayor, know that we've had other proposals come forward, and there are people in the community and people in Thorold South who've had questions about plans coming on board. So again, I would just ask that council can comment and do whatever they want, but I think, from my opinion, we delay this till our September 9th meeting to get time for some feedback here.
Okay.
And, and one question directly to staff. Would this proposal require zoning and official plan amendments?
Is there someone here that can answer that? Walter, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. It's our understanding, we've had a look at it, and it's our understanding that a zoning amendment and an official plan amendment would be required. Both applications will require a public meeting, so there will be an opportunity for public input at that time also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, Mr. Basie, just a question for you. So an opportunity for the public at that time to discuss the zoning and official plan amendment or to discuss the project? Or both?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. It would be both. So if, if the zoning amendment doesn't proceed and get approval and, without an appeal, then the project doesn't go forward either. So there's an opportunity to discuss the project, obviously, as part of the zoning amendment, official plan amendment applications.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, councillor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not sure who this is going to be directed to, but if we give our municipal support tonight, that, from my understanding, by no means says this project goes forward. So I'm assuming that Electra will have to come back with their proposal before the next step or before even being confirmed to move forward. Is that correct?
They have to go through the process, which is the normal planning process.
Right, so there will be stages along the way where they can be turned down. That's.
They have to go through the process and get approved, and we're the, at the end of the day, we're the ones that are proven in council.
Right, right.
Okay?
Okay. And I think councillor Longo asked the question of our head planner, so I have a solid answer. I'll still support this. Thank you.
You go ahead, councillor DeAngelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, planning staff answered the, the planning questions, but I have a general question from staff. Is, is there any concerns they see with us agreeing to moving forward in principle? Any risks that the city's going to be involved at this point in time?
Do you want to answer that?
I'm not sure which staff wants to answer that one.
Go ahead, Mano.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Based on what we know, we don't see anything at risk at this point in time, but as we know more about the project and it goes to the next steps, we'll get to know more about it, and if something comes about, we'll let councillor know about it.
Okay, that, that sort of answers my question, because again, we have to go through this process. The public will have their opportunity to have some say. The committee will have an opportunity to have some say. So supporting it today or September 9th, I don't think it's going to really matter overall. It's always nice to have a little bit more time, but with staff's reassurance that there's nothing urgent here that will cause an issue and that we have to go through the planning process, I'm comfortable moving forward tonight.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor, sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Exactly what councillor O'Hare and councillor DeAngelo said. I think the public will have their opportunity, everybody will have their opportunity. This is just the first step, so I'll support it tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, councillor Duro.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. I kind of have some doubts, as councillor Longo has. I think the residents should have been brought in immediately, just to get some feedback. So I won't support this tonight. I'd like it to come back on September 9th. Thank you.
Okay. So we've got the motion on the floor. The motion that is, has, was read. We had a mover and a seconder?
Yes, we did. We had councillor O'Hare and Decker.
Okay. Go ahead, councillor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put a friendly amendment on the floor, that we delay a decision until September 9th meeting.
I, who was the mover and seconder?
It was O'Hare. Councillor O'Hare moved it, councillor Decker seconded it.
Okay, is that a friendly amendment? No. All right?
Leave it as is.
Do you, do you still want to put it forward? It's, it's not a friendly amendment, so. So we'd have to take that as a separate thing, talk about it and vote on it separately?
If, if he's looking to defer it to September 9th, that would be a separate motion.
That's right.
If that gets defeated, this motion is still on the floor, and it can be voted on.
Vote on the basis.
No, no, no. Okay. Discussions go through here, not no sidebars. Okay?
Okay, we were just discussing the vote in 2019 when it was brought forward before, and then we were faced with a possible lawsuit.
So there's a, how do you want to proceed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So right now, that motion that was read out is on the floor. It was moved and seconded. Councillor O'Hare and councillor Decker, it won't be a friendly amendment. So if there is a motion to defer it to September 9th, that can come forward and council can vote on that. If, if that motion doesn't pass, a motion to defer, this main motion is still on the floor to be voted on.
Okay. You got that? All right, hi?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I understand exactly what the clerk's saying.
Okay, so you're gonna, that's the motion to defer to then and?
Am I allowed to defer even after I've spoken?
I know. That's why I'm going to.
I think it's in order, it's your call, though, if he wants to.
Mr. Mayor, I'll revoke my, my motion, because I'll let council decide what they want to do.
Okay, so if this motion's defeated, then you can bring up whatever you want after, okay? So the motion on the floor is the motion that was read. We had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Online, what have I got?
Favor, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Dedavidis? Okay, so one, two, three, four, five. Opposed? Now we move on to the public meetings, correct? Okay, so there's a statutory public meeting under the Planning Act. I'd like to call to order the public meeting being held pursuant to the provisions of section 34 of the Planning Act as amended, respecting proposal for zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan a subdivision, 95 Queen Street South. Up first, I'll call on the applicant presentation, which is senior planner Greg Terrace, UEM Consulting for the applicant presentation. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sure if we can put the presentation up, if there's something I need to press here.
You had plenty of chances to speak. I give you a fair chance to speak.
Thank you very much. So this is a proposal for a four-unit townhouse at 95 Queen Street South. The property is a approximately 0.1 hectare residential property, and it's about 27 meters frontage and 36 and a half meters deep. For someone like me, that's about 88 and a half feet frontage and 120 feet deep. There's currently an existing single detached dwelling, two-story detached dwelling on the property and a detached garage. The proposal would be to demolish the house and the garage and put up a four-story, or four-unit townhouse. As part of this process, a zoning bylaw amendment is required, and in support of the application, in addition to the planning justification report that we prepared, we also undertook a functional servicing brief to ensure that existing services can support the townhouse development. The, the application was submitted to the city, and we received comments on June 3rd, and no concerns were identified by city staff. The property is currently designated urban living area in the Thorold official plan, and no official plan amendment is required. The zoning is residential. The zoning is residential first density, R1C, and, and so we're asking to rezone the property to a R3 zoning, residential third density, which will allow a townhouse unit, the townhouse units. There is a site-specific component to the rezoning that we are requesting. It's to reduce the minimum lot frontage of the end unit, Unit 4, from 7.5 meters to 7.1 meters, and this is really just a function of the angle of the lot relative to Queen Street. It's not perfectly square, so in order for it to be parallel with, the front of the houses to be parallel with Queen Street, it's, the property is slightly askew, so we have a slight reduction on one corner of the, of the property, a reduction in the front, minimum lot frontage. Oops, sorry. So the application here is supported by a number of planning policies, both at the provincial, regional, municipal level. The Planning Act encourages development of a full range of housing options, so introducing the townhouses here would, would intermingle with existing single-family houses in, in the area. The provincial planning statement is emphasizing efficient development and prioritizing intensification, especially in existing serviced areas. So we're not going into greenfield areas, we already have municipal services, and it is, it is an underutilized property. The official plan similarly encourages residential intensification on higher densities, as does Thorold's own official plan, with its 25% intensification target. And this is ported on underutilized lots, which you will see in a future picture here that we can show you where there is vacant lands on the property. The attached is a conceptual plan showing the four-unit development, and so you can see where the existing house residence is and the detached garage. We are proposing to have the units all fit within all the setbacks, as, as I mentioned, except for the, I guess it'd be northeast corner, where there's a slight reduction in the lot frontage because of the, the skew of the property relative to the street. The backyards will be deep, will have over 15 meters depth, and only seven and a half meters is required, so these will be 45-foot-deep backyards, plenty of space, and, and even, even at this, there is some opportunity if, if the staff or council would like to see the development slightly moved back, maybe to be more fitting with the frontages of adjacent properties, there's still plenty of room to move this within the actual lot itself, and not cause any issues relative to setbacks. This is an example of a four-unit townhouse in, in Thorold under construction. I was actually involved in this from a minor variance perspective. It's, it's, I know it's not finished, but this is on a very similar-sized lot. This one is 26 meters by 40 meters, so it's actually slightly narrower by a meter than the lot we're dealing with on 95 Queen Street, but slightly deeper. So this is an example, the, the, as part of our application, we didn't go into retaining an architect yet, and spending tens of thousands of dollars on design drawings to, to present it. We thought, you know, there's lots of examples of similar designs, and, and we wanted to present what our concept was at this point for the rezoning. And then finally, this just shows at the top, the split screen here is the location on Queen Street, and the bottom shows the picture of the property. You can see the vacant lands adjacent to the detached garage and then the existing two-story development. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you very much. So I'll open the floor to questions for our presenter. Are there any questions for Greg? Go ahead, Counselor sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Thanks for the presentation, I appreciate it. When you say "underutilized land," what, what do you mean? Because when I see an existing house, and I see a, you know, family that live there, it's, it's functional. What is underutilized land?
Well, I think when you look at, through you, Mr. Mayor, I think when you look at the property, there's certainly a component of vacant land on the property to the south side of the garage, so this is, as I said, almost a 90-foot-wide lot, so, so there is plenty of room for additional development on the land.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Counselor sentence. Good. Go ahead, Counselor DeDeVitas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this build here, how many, is it going to be a, a unit with a whole bunch of bedrooms? Is this going to be a student housing here? Like some of these places I see, they're like, like five, six bedrooms and 20 cars on the street.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, this is not at all that kind of intention. It is, it'll likely be a typical three-bedroom townhouse unit on the property, and, and there would be parking, there would be parking in the driveway, as well as in the garage, there would be parking as well, so there'd be two spaces available on the property.
I'm just concerned with the character of this community down, this, the section down here. I'm just worried about the parking, the issues that'll have, the noise and the privacy for the people living around there.
Anything else, Counselor?
That's all, thank you.
Counselor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to Greg. Greg, I never really like hearing of a home that looks in good standing being torn down, and then as a result, being carted off as landfill. So is there something in the plans to have someone perhaps like Habitat for Humanity, the Restore, come in and take out the useful material before it does get demolished, should this move forward?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, we'd be happy to work with an agency such as Habitat for Humanity with you. I have been involved and familiar with what they do, and, and had other developments where we've had, you know, kitchens and useful things taken out of, out of house, yeah.
Great. I hope you keep that in mind. This certainly looks like it would be a great candidate for an opportunity for them to obtain some materials. And just as a side note, if this does move forward, I do like your suggestion of moving it back so that it's in line with the neighborhood homes, so if that works well with planning.
Counselor Decker.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Greg, for the presentation. The lot does not look that wide, so will, you said there would be four units there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Correct. The, although it doesn't look that wide, if you, based on the city's planning requirements for townhouse minimum widths, it, it meets the requirement for, for townhouse units.
In the height, would it be sort of in line with the, because there's a bungalow to the left, and then it looks like maybe a one and a half story to the right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There is currently a two-story house on the property, and it may be that, again, we would be within the maximum height that's permitted within the town zoning bylaw. We've not asked for any increase in height, and I think we'd be well within the height requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor DeAngel, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your suggestion of moving the property back, or the building back, would that create additional parking spots in the front? Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it potentially could give us additional parking, which would be beneficial to the development. That would be a benefit of, of moving the, the whole development back to match sort of the, the setbacks of the current houses. And as I indicated, sort of the, the, there's plenty of rear yard space that we can certainly move the development back.
Because that, that's a concern, the parking. Queen Street's a narrow street, doesn't even have borders and curb, and there's no sidewalk on that side, so parking's very, very important. The example that you gave us is a little unique, because it has a parking lot across the street, so that one's a little different, so you have to look at things in totality. I'd like to hear what some of the public comments are, but at this point in time, parking to me is always an issue, because every time we cram something into, we create parking problems, and we have those throughout our whole city, that are then creating safety issues.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Deroz.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, are any of these units going to be affordable housing or low-income geared toward?
I, I don't, through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't know the answer to that at this point. We've not gotten to that point of the process to know how much these units might sell for, so I really don't have an answer to that.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for your presentation, Greg.
Thank you.
Now, at this time, is there anyone online or present in the chamber who wishes to speak on this application? I'll mention it again, at this time, is there anyone online or present in the chamber who wishes to speak to this application? Is there anyone online? Enter. Would you like to speak? Go ahead. Kristen, please go up to the microphone and state your full name and address for the public record.
Of course. My name is Kristen Smith. I live at 10 McDonald Ave. in Thorold, just around the corner from this property. And similar to the remarks made by Counselor DeDeVitas around, I do have some concerns around the community, the, the mention of the one and a half story home, and I know that it's within the parameters of height restrictions and those sort of things, but I do have some concerns about large properties being in this particular neighborhood, including some parking concerns as well. So I just wanted to address that as, as a resident living right around the corner from this property, and appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to council about that.
And that's been duly noted, and is there anyone on council that has a question for Kristen? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you feel more comfortable as this suggestion was made to move the house further back and have more parking in the front? Would that allay some of your fears of clogging the street?
Yeah, I think, I think some consideration to that, and also sightlines of the homes. I'm not a neighbor on either side, and I'm not sure if anyone else in the gallery is, but I think some of the sightlines for the neighbors as well, to have the property moved back, or the building moved back, would make sense.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor Deroz.
In your honest opinion, will this development interfere with your quality of life and just your enjoyment? Because I grew up in that area. It is a beautiful area. Walked at the school every day, and just, how, you know, you're here obviously because you're not happy about it, so.
Yeah, I, I have concerns about, and knowing that there's other builds farther down on Queen Street, I do think that there's other locations within the city of Thorold where developments such as this, that fit with the planning models around intensification and things like that, and I'm well aware of the housing issues and the need for housing, but I think the actual demographic of this particular neighborhood, and I realize it is my home, that I would have concerns about that, and why I'm here today in front of, in front of the council chambers.
Yeah, no, thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. I, I agree with what you're saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor DeAngel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, a quick question. At this present time, do you have any parking issues at your end of McDonald? I, I lived at halfway up McDonald for a long, extensive time, so it's not a street that's a thorough street, so it's usually just the residents that live on it, drive on it. Is there any parking issues right now that you foresee as a problem, and with this, you then would foresee that the parking would become an issue? Maybe if you could just elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, for sure. So currently, because they are single-family dwellings on, on each of the properties, we don't have an issue with parking on our street, on McDonald, at this point, but, but if, even within a three-bedroom home, if people do have, like if it's three different tenants that are occupying that space, you could see how this could compound the parking situation if there's three vehicles. So that would be my concern there, but currently, everyone is able to park in their driveway. It also aligns with the snow policies and things like that, that there is space for people to move their vehicles into a driveway or into a garage currently on the street, on McDonald. I can only speak to McDonald. Thank you.
Thank you for that, because I know that, that current house there probably will has more parking now than it will eventually when the other four houses are, the townhouses are built, so. And I know the other houses, character-wise, there's quite a bit of parking, the driveways are long, and they're not excessively on the street, so thank you for those comments.
For sure, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Kristen, for coming, and your comments are duly noted. We appreciate you making those comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
So now I'm going to ask one more time, is there anyone online or present in the chamber who wishes to speak on the application? Come forward, please, and state your full name and address, please.
Lynn Franklin, 18 Rose Avenue. And it's pretty much what everyone has already addressed with the issues. I just wanted to, I guess, just put forward my, as a second concerned resident that showed up for tonight, so just with the parking is my main concern, but, yeah, but also how it fits in the neighborhood with the, with the look of the, the place as well.
And I appreciate you coming and sharing those concerns, and is there anyone again from council that wants to ask any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Deroz.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming, and what's the general consensus in your neighborhood, basically? Because I know there's only a few of you tonight, but I know a lot of people are shy to speak publicly, so I just.
Yeah, I haven't really talked to the people in the neighborhood. I should have prior to this, but I didn't.
Do you think they're all aware of it?
I don't even know if they are. I mean, to be perfectly honest, the letter came to my house, and it was just addressed to myself alone, so I don't even know, you know, I don't know where they got that information, but.
When did you get the letter?
Probably maybe three weeks ago, something like that.
Okay, and then there's also people that aren't here, or did get the letter, or live in that area that want to express their concern. You can, they can do it in writing as well.
Okay, yeah.
And I'm sure that was instructed on the letter as well.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll talk to some people. I figured I would come tonight and see what was being said, so.
I appreciate that. Go ahead, Counselor DeAngel.
Just on that note, Mr. American, do you know when the deadline is for residents to put in a written concern?
I gotta ask someone from planning, can?
I have a board report.
No, no, for the comments from the public meeting, not the report. Go ahead, Walter, do you know when the deadline to submit comments prior to, I know it comes back for consideration, but there's a window there, the date is?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Mayor. We, we haven't set a date yet when to bring a technical recommendation report back to council for a decision, so there will be many weeks, if not more than a month, definitely.
Okay.
It won't, it won't come back to the next council meeting, for sure.
But I mean, there, so people have a, a period of time that's greater than a couple of weeks to get their comments in, correct?
Yes, absolutely. So by email, or by letter, or they can even come to the offices at 8 Carlton Street to discuss it with us, and if they have any questions, we can answer those questions also.
Okay, and for anybody that's listening or here, the planning, building departments at 8 Carlton Street upstairs from, of the senior center, okay? Any further?
No, I, I think, Mr. Mayor, it's important that the residents that did come here, if you could let your fellow residents know that there's still an opportunity to put some written submissions in prior to the technical report coming to council, I think that would be appreciated. Council needs to know what the residents are thinking, and I think this is a good opportunity, and I appreciate the two of you that came out and spoke today. It's, it's part of, it's a great part of the process, so thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, I want to thank you for coming and speaking at council.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, is there anyone online or present in the chamber who wishes to speak on the application? Seeing that there's no one else, I do that before I close the meeting. Yeah, okay. Okay, so 11.3 is the planning report, DS 202025, proposed zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan of subdivision 95 Queen Street South. Reminder, this report is only presented to council for information purposes. It is currently open for questions and comment from members of council. Please note, all comments will be captured by city staff and incorporated into the final report, which will be brought forward at a future council meeting for consideration. Can I get a mover and a seconder for the report? Councillor O'Hare and councillor Decker? And are there any comments or questions from members of council? Go ahead, councillor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's make a comment to staff that I hope that they can work with the developer to, we're going to build this, we need housing, we need intensification, from what we're told, but I think we need to make sure that this property's moved back so that sightlines are respected from neighboring properties and to also give the ability for increased parking to alleviate the concerns of the residents. So I would, again, just put that out there to staff to try to work with.
And those comments are being captured, obviously. Go ahead, councillor DeRoz.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to get more feedback from the neighborhood. I may go door knocking if I have to. The other thing is, I'm surprised, staff added through council's direction, impact on environment, climate change, which, neither here nor there, but climate change, but the environment. There's no known, and it says there, there are no known environmental or climate change related impacts to this report. I would think tearing down a perfectly livable house and building four more there is definitely an impact on our environment. I just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Go ahead, councillor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with councillor DeRoz. That's a very important statement. A question for Sean. So does this bylaw, change in the bylaw also affect the 7.5 to 7.1 meter requirement, or is that also going to have to go to committee of adjustment?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, that would all get captured as part of the bylaw.
Okay. That's it. Easy peasy. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. We got a mover and a seconder to receive the report. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Agreement of the public meeting. This fulfills the requirements of the Planning Act pursuant to section 34. The public meeting portion of this application is now adjourned. Items for consent. We have items 12.1 through 12.10. Can I get a mover and a seconder for those items? Councillor Hanley and councillor O'Hare, is there anyone that wants to speak to an item or pull an item? Go ahead, councillor Hanley.
12.2, please.
12.2?
And 12.1, actually.
Anyone else? Go ahead, councillor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 12.3?
Okay. So we have 12.4 through 12.10. I had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Now we'll go to 12.1, and we'll use the same mover and seconder for these three, but we'll vote on them separate. Go ahead, councillor Hanley on 12.1.
Okay, on 12.1, there's a lot to be done to bring this forward, to actually be approved by council, I'm sure as you know, like they're only wanting the thing because there are substantial, long-term costs with that type of storage, craning of it, the removal of it. There's liabilities in regards to them, whether or not they're fully inserted into the ground, or some of the Moat system part of it's out of the ground. There are incidents where people have opened them and then fallen inside. Is it going to be locked? So there's a lot to be considered here. I know of two sites in Thorold that have them. One is, you can go by, it's open all the time, so, you know, which, if the city's going to participate in a project like that, you have to look at these, these can't be open receptacles that are going to be accessible by children or young adults or something like that. So there's a lot of consideration to be put in there, even at the dog park, like they say, with that type of system. So not that I'm against it, not that I'm for it, but we need to look at all the pros and cons and the long-term financial impact that will be borne upon the municipality, so that's.
And that'll all come back in the report.
I just wanted to make that point on that one.
Fine, that's a good point. Go ahead, councillor DeRoz.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not a fan of this. Looked into it a bit, but, you know, from rotting to inviting vermin and coyotes and the stench, and the cost. I can't imagine, once staff comes back to report the cost for this. I think it's unnecessary. There's been a few incidences where we've had some overflowing cans at parks, but that's taken care of, once staff is informed about it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I had a mover and a seconder. Go ahead, councillor DeAngelo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the priority list, where will this fall? Like, is this something that will, this report will come back to council at the budget meeting? Like, I don't think we're in a hurry for this to move forward.
No, I think this was going to be a report, but it's a budgetary item.
Well, that's what I said. It just says a staff report. Like, we could ask staff, 20 staff reports every meeting, where's it going to land in terms of their priority and what needs to get done? Because there's sometimes stuff not getting done that we want done. So I have no problem supporting this to get that information, but I don't see it coming forward because we probably won't act on it till budget time next year, so if it could be delayed till that point in time where staff have time to work on it, it gives them more time to do so. That's my point.
Okay. We'll take that as staff direction. Okay? Okay, we had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay. Permitting system for public demonstrations, events and rallies, and councillor Hanley, you pulled that one?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see that, you know, it actually states at the end that staff be directed report back to council and options for implementing a permit system. Myself, I find it that, you know, one of their biggest concerns are is that they need to respect under section 2B and section 2C the Canadian Charter of Rights in regards to freedoms and allows for freedom of expression. My concern is that the city has doubled standards, is that we need to be cognizant of all across the line, and, you know, I'll say it openly, is that councillors don't have the rights for, under the Charter of Rights for Freedom of Expression, and that's been noted here. So to me personally, we have a double standard, and that we need to have all our policies in line. We can't have one policy that allows someone to, say, burn the Canadian flag and death to Canada and death to America and death to Christians, and yet another faucet of a policy in the city denies that person an opportunity. So I actually appreciate this coming forward and that the city recognizes that individuals do have the right, the freedom of expression. So I'm waiting for the report to come back to council and we'll see where it goes there, but I can't support it in the interim because the city practices a double standard.
Go ahead to our city clerk, Nicholas.
Yep, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarity, this is the report that council requested, I believe, back in April, and the motion on the floor is just that this report be received.
And it says here that therefore be resolved that the corporation city of Thorold and acts of law that staff be directed report back to council, so are we getting another report?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, that was the council, eighth meeting, and this report is in response to that.
I see that. Okay, so we're not doubling up and coming back again?
No.
So we're actually going to leave it the way it is, the city policy, because we're afraid of litigation in regards to restricting someone's rights of freedom of expression, if I read that right?
Based on our review, that's a consideration.
Okay. I appreciate that answer, actually, because we do have a double standard in this municipality.
Go ahead, councillor DeRoz.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just, it sounds like we're afraid of litigation. Is that why we're not following through with this? Because I'm just reading that again. Staff would need to retain legal counsel to review any proposed permitting system for assemblies and demonstrations. So I thought staff would have done that prior to this report being put out. Am I incorrect?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we know, we have not expended funds to retain counsel, for example, a constitutional lawyer, to provide advice. This is based on a review of what we feel are best practices, based on practices that are out there with other municipalities.
And I wanted to follow up with that. Did you guys reach out to other municipalities that are dealing with this, or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We reviewed the publicly available policies that are out there, that were also discussed in various council meetings from other municipalities.
So from what I gather from this necklace, is that we would have to be reactive to whatever happens instead of proactive. Is that correct? Assumption?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, councillor, can you just clarify your question?
I'm just wondering, has any community been sued for trying to, for not giving permission for a protest? Has there been a precedent?
I can't tell you off the top of my head. I do know that in reviewing what's out there, through you, Mr. Mayor, there are really, I mean, Justin, did we find any permitting systems that are actually out there?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I did not find any municipality that has a permitting system.
And what I said previously, thank you, Justin, it seems like we're being reactive instead of proactive. I would want to nip this in the bud before, once it happens, it's too late. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we had, what?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, I think the best practice appears to be, based on what's out there currently, or what's not out there, I should say, is not having a permitting system for protests, because there is a decent amount of literature out there that speaks to the difficulties municipalities and staff can encounter when they take any action that may be seen, not necessarily actually, in reality, but can be seen, to limit certain constitutional rights of ratepayers. So I would imagine that that's one of the main reasons why a permitting system for protests just really isn't a common thing in Ontario municipalities.
So basically, you're saying that our bylaw enforcement would be enough, the bylaws we have in place?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's a good point. There is reference in the report to other tools that the city, there are certain limits that are set out in various bylaws in the report there. And of course, there's legislation, right? There is the Criminal Code of Canada. There are certain restrictions to people's ability to organize, and so that needs to be noted as well, and it is noted in that report.
I just want to make a final comment. The reason I brought it up more than anything is just for public safety, for our community to feel safe. I want to feel safe walking around my community. Sometimes I don't anymore, so that's why I brought this up. Thank you.
Okay. We had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. 12.3, and go ahead, that's councillor O'Hare brought. Hold that, support for elect, respect pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can we please have the discussions through the chair instead of these sidebars all night? Go ahead.
Do you want me to discuss, Mr. Mayor, what I was talking about with councillor DeRoz? In the whole public?
Right now, I've got a speaker on this, okay?
If you want me to go through the chair, I'll tell you what I was saying.
Go ahead. We're done that item, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked to put this on the agenda because it's a very important pledge. For many years, groups in Ontario and across Canada have tried without success to get elected officials to be held to the highest standards of good conduct. We, as municipal leaders, can lead by example and support this elect pledge. In so doing, we will be doing our part in rejecting harassment, supporting all cultures, and treating everyone with respect. And I truly hope that my fellow councillors will support this motion.
Thank you, councillor O'Hare. Did you want to speak to that, councillor?
Ah, yes. You know, I respect the councillor's motion, that stuff, but unfortunately, again, you know, I'll say that, you know, harassment and what happens in regards to council chambers has happened in the past. The city conducted an investigation in regards to workplace harassment, but it's never been made public. So, you know, and I've paid the penalty for it. And this is more or less just a tag on of what a provincial legislation that's trying to come forward where a city councillor can be removed from his position for being in conduct, so I respect it.
We're talking about this motion.
And that's what the motion is relations to.
No. Just stick to the motion, not about your past grievances.
I'm just saying, I agree with them that this is the problem that needs to come forward, not my past grievance. It needs to come forward because I myself has been one that, and I'm taking full credit and full responsibility for my actions and saying I support this, we need to go on forward with it, you know, and I just hope that it's dealt with in an even and openly manner when it comes before council. So I'm just owning up to anything and agreeing with what he's saying, that's all I'm doing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead, councillor, sentence.
Mr. Mayor, through you, fully support this. I think it has everything in it with protecting councillors and public, and I see no problem with taking this pledge, so I'll support this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, councillor DeRoz.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. I think we should all support this. It's a good thing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, councillor Decker.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. O'Hare, for bringing this through, and I'll support it as well. I think it's a good motion and I'll accept the pledge as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, councillor DeAngelo.
Likewise, Mr. Mayor, I'll support this. My early days as an elected official, my ethnicity was questioned and commented on, so, you know, we all, when you put your name forward, sometimes you get the wrath of individuals that attack you for various reasons, and that's not right. They can attack you on your policy decisions, that I have no issue with, but when it comes to race, creed, diversity, any of those factors, that's unacceptable, so I definitely support this, being one that's been attacked in the past. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so we had a mover and a seconder? Oh, councillor DeDeVitas, go ahead.
Yes, I was going to say, along with my fellow councillors, I will support this. I don't want to keep people from running for elected office, so this will do a good tool to help them and feel more assured that people have their back, so I would definitely support this.
Okay. Okay, we had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay. Items for consideration. DF 182025, benefits 2025. Can I get a mover and a seconder for this report? Councillor DeRoz and councillor DeAngelo. And the report will go up, and then Maria's here to answer any questions from council. Are there any questions for director of finance? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. PwCSC 62025, TCHG, fee for services. Um, PWCSC 6, 2025, TCAG, fee-for-service agreement and 2025 incentive payment. Uh, can I get a mover and a secondor for this, please? Again, I got councillor O'Hare and councillor Decker. Um, and, uh, Mark is here to answer any questions. Go ahead, councillor DeRose.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. It might be directed to our CFO, but I'll let Mark decide. Um, just, I, I understand what is being asked of us. Um, is there a cost to us? That's all I'm asking. I know they, they need to get operating money ahead of time, but what's, is there an initial cost to us at all?
Okay. Thank you for the questions, through you, Mr. Mayor. There is, uh, there is a cost to the city, uh, and that's part of the, uh, the request that they've made is to increase the, uh, the annual cost, the base fee, um, as well as the incentive program. So historically, we've provided them, uh, $2,500 increments, uh, based on their, uh, membership fees or, or their revenue. Uh, whereas now we're increasing that incentive fee, uh, just to accommodate the increased costs of their operations and their business and facility, uh, facility maintenance. So there is an increased cost, but when we reviewed that, uh, staff, staff found the request to be very reasonable.
I, I understood that they just wanted the money ahead of time that was already allotted in the previous budget.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, no, you're absolutely correct. The, so, um, we're asking for two things this evening. One is for the approval of the incentive, uh, for, um, to, to provide the incentive fee in advance. Uh, and the second is to approve the, um, the renewal of the service agreement, uh, for the next five years.
Right, and, uh, would this be a reconsider, aren't we under contract for five, is it a certain amount of years that we signed up for or approved? If staff can answer, is it five years?
Thank you for the question, through you, Mr. Mayor. You're correct. Uh, the current agreement expires at the end of this year. Uh, so we're just trying to be proactive and have this prepared for the end of the term.
Okay, and, and you have a final number of the cost increase or increment, or?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity. It, it's a great organization. Me and my kids go, I, I, I will support it. I just need to, I'm always, I have to know numbers.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, schedule A of the, uh, proposed, um, renewal of the service agreement provides both the existing, uh, payment schedule and the new payment schedule. So that, that outlines the increase in the base fee, as well as the increase in the increments, uh, for the proposed agreement.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, councillor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mark. Um, fully support this, uh, in terms of what the city gets out of their bang for the buck. It's a great investment. Uh, they do wonderful work and, uh, growing every year, so, uh, kudos to them. Keep up the good work, and I'll support this.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Deavides, go ahead.
Yes, um, through you, Mr. Mayor. The TCAG does a great job. They do a ton of work. I'll fully support this. Uh, they put in, they save us so much money as a city. They do a great job down there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Um, Allenberg Road and Wendell Village Crescent intersection, traffic control measures. Can I get a mover and a secondor, please, for this? Councillor Decker and councillor DeAngela, is there any questions? Uh, Chef, Sean or Jeff is here to answer any questions. Go ahead, councillor De Rose.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, the question I just had was, I know that there's some installation of the traffic's, um, stop signs. There's also a piano, um, crosswalk, uh, so there's visual. Uh, and I, looking through the report, I didn't see it, maybe I missed it, but is there an, uh, an opportu, an opportunity to add other visuals? And I'm, the visual I'd like to see is similar to what's at Richmond Street School, is it's painted on the road, school ahead, school zone, um, right on the road. So when you're driving, you're, you're coming into that. Is there an opportunity to do something like that at a, a, a reasonable cost? Again, to give further, uh, information to those that are driving down that road that there's a school ahead and that they should be prepared to slow down, uh, to a moderate speed going through there. Is, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to our, to Sean. It, can that be added, or is that part of the, uh, the upgrade?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As a matter of fact, uh, what we're currently working on, and I, I talked about this a little bit at the Traffic Safety Committee, uh, the other day, is that we're working on, um, developing policies and procedures associated with the, um, community safety zones, which is what you're seeing on Collier Road. And so that will eventually become part of the, the solution, but for right now, we were, we were hoping to go with the, the solution we have, and we'll, we'll do that, like this, this area is probably going to become a community safety zone as well.
Yeah, no, that's, that's excellent. Uh, the recommendation's coming forward, but is there an opportunity to add that painting markings onto the road at this point in time? Not wait for a community zone. I know there'll be, uh, a policy coming later. But here's a good opportunity, again, right where a school is, to help facilitate, especially with a lot of new traffic, newer homes being built there, uh, newer visitors coming through, anything that can in, and, um, enhance, uh, the visibility that, that allows people the knowledge to know that there's a school ahead would be helpful. So if we could do something like that at a moderate cost, um, I would like to add that to the, uh, to the motion or to the report if possible.
Okay, um, so I can certainly add that, whether that's as a friendly amendment. But, uh, would there be, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, any financial considerations? Uh, currently, there's the amount of $6,450, uh, be approved as a budget overrun?
Uh, Sean, would that would be a added cost?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it certainly would be. Yes, um, I, I haven't priced it out, so I don't actually know. But if you add it, say, $3,000, we could probably make that happen.
So where are we at now?
I would, uh, since we're doing some modifications and enhancements, I would support that. I'm not sure then, uh, if the.
Well, I have to first, the mover and secondor.
I think I'm one of them, so.
I know. I think you moved it, and councillor Decker seconded it. And councillor Decker, are you good with this change as well? So we're gonna, um, make that change, just so everybody's aware. I want to make one thing clear, and I'll have Maria comment on it. Um, these budget overruns that you're seeing for, for community safety, we get money from the red, uh, from the speed and red camera, uh, that goes into reserves. And Maria, can you explain that? So even though we have these budget overruns, we've received, how much did we receive that goes into reserves? So we're actually, uh, the, this money is there that we're pulling out of reserves that we, that we get as part of the program for road safety.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. We got about $70,000 this year.
How much?
$70,000.
$70,000, so just, and this is all going to be explained when the Director of, uh, Transportation comes in, uh, in September and explains the whole system. But every municipality receives money from this program that has to be used for road safety, okay? So just, so you know that, that, that this money, even though it's a budget overrun, we receive $70,000 and can be utilized towards these budget overruns. Yet, that's the key word. Um, did you want to say?
Well, no, I just, to me, that's, um, I, I have no issue then, uh, with the funding source of where this is coming from. That's, that's the POA of, of fences, uh, that, funds that we get, and if part of it's being allocated to road safety, I have no issue with that.
No, the whole amount has to be. That's the system. It can only be used for, uh, road safety.
Yeah, so, so I appreciate what staff's going to be working with, with the community safety zones and reviewing the policies and how we're doing it elsewhere. But if we could sort of get the ball rolling here before those policies are in, I, I find that's helpful, especially to the residents in that area.
Okay, so what he's done is he's added $3,000 to the motion to cover any added expense, whether we use it or not on that painting, correct? Okay. What? Go ahead, councillor sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, just to, uh, uh, staff, I'm not commenting on this. I'll support this. Um, just, there's three, three reports on traffic safety, and I really appreciate them getting out as quick as they could. I won't comment on all of them, but well done, speedy, and, uh, I'll support them all. But I appreciate this one, especially on Allenberg, because I know, Sean, we've been talking about this for a few years now, so thank you very much. And if I had an opinion, it would be those stanchions, those green stanchions that are on, on, uh, Collier. Uh, people think they can't get through them. Those things would work amazingly on slowing people down. So in the future, maybe that's another way to, to look at it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's the, uh, change. Um, it's a friendly amendment because those are the two that put the motion forward. So all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. 13-4, PWCS 40, 2025, Port Robinson Road, Catarac Road to Merrittville Highway, traffic safety measures. Can I get a mover and a secondor? I got councillor DeRose and councillor Hanley. Uh, and we'll get that out. And you see what that's regarding? Um, and again, we had a mover and a secondor, and Sean and Jeff are here to answer any questions. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. PWCS 41, 2025, Westover Pipeline Lease Agreement. Can I get a mover and a secondor for this report? Councillor DeRose and councillor Decker. Um, and Jeff's here to answer any questions regarding this report. Are there any questions for Jeff? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Park Lane and Richmond Street always stop. Uh, can I get a mover and a secondor, councillor sentence? Are you moving that? And councillor Deavides, are you going to second it? Yep, okay. Um, and Sean and Jeff are here to answer questions. Are there any questions regarding this? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. PWCS 45, 2025, Richmond Street at Tupper Drive, Romney Crescent Intersection, interim, four-way stop and traffic markings. Can I get a mover and a secondor, councillor DeAngela and councillor O'Hare? And, uh, again, Sean and Jeff are here, and I know, uh, councillor DeAngela, this is something you brought up.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to change the recommendation. I, I wanted to go with the alternative recommendation, so that's why I put my hand up. I wasn't specifically going to move this one, but the alternative one, which was to, uh, spend $7,000 and just put in the stoplight, uh, sorry, stop signs, the, uh, the pavement markings, and not move forward with the study yet. I, I think we should see what happens with just putting the stop signs and the markings and how that facilitates traffic flow before we start going to the next step. To me, that sort of makes sense, uh, so it might be delayed six months, uh, you know, we might be talking about this during budget time, uh, looking at the ex, uh, doing the extended work. But I think right now, uh, because it is a budget overrun, I think let's, let's put in the stop signs and enhance that intersection, um, first, before we start moving into the plans of doing the $300,000 intersection.
So. What?
If you're looking for it, it's, it's listed under alternatives.
I know, that's what I'm looking for right there.
It's on page, uh, I think. It's on the second page.
Mr. Mayor, I'll support that second alternative.
Okay. Is there anyone that wants to speak to that?
And I appreciate staff putting that in there, uh, as for consideration.
Do you want to make any comment on that, Sean?
Uh, through you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, no.
You're fine with that?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, councillor O'Hare.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Through you, um, to Maria. So then, from what I heard earlier, this also wouldn't be a budget overrun, but rather would come from this fund, money earned from the speeding cameras?
Well, I think it's a budget overrun, but the resources that put in reserves that will cover that. And am I explaining that right?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. It, it is an overrun, but there is funding in place tops.
Okay, great. On that matter, I'm just wondering if perhaps quarterly, we could have an update on how much, uh, has gone into that account? This was the first time.
Only done on a yearly basis.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, the $70,000 is what we got for 2024.
Okay.
So we would know at the end of this year, but we would anticipate that the amount wouldn't go down?
I, I think it's going to go up.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Anyway, uh, again, I don't know. Those are questions we can ask the Director of Transportation when he comes in September. Go, go ahead.
Could I ask Maria a question, just?
Yeah.
Maria, does that money have to be used up that calendar year, or you lose it, or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it has to go to traffic safety. You can't, you can't use it for other things, but it has to go to traffic safety.
But there's no timeline there?
No.
Okay, thank you.
There's no timeline like, yeah. Okay, so let's get everybody on the same page here, and, uh, we'll have the clerk put that up, what we're going to approve here. It is, because he's the one, that, those are the two they've agreed that, right? That's a friendly, uh.
I had a chat with myself, and I agreed.
Yeah. Yep, okay. So I'm just having to put it up. I want everyone to see what they're voting on here. Okay. Everybody see that? Okay, we had a mover and a secondor. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Um, notice this a motion, councillor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll bring a motion regarding parkland playgrounds, uh, in new developments.
Okay, you're going to bring that forward next meeting, and that's a book, fa, fast-tracking those playgrounds.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. Okay, councillor, uh, sentence, you're up next. Notice a motion regarding reducing the size of council. Go ahead.
I'll be bringing that next, next meeting.
Okay. Um, and councillor DeRose, notice a motion regarding the publication of the Sex Offender Registry by the Province of Ontario. You'll be bringing that next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? Okay, there are motions tonight. I got councillor Decker, motion respecting payment methods. Um, I'll call on councillor Decker for her motion. Is there a secondor for your motion? Councillor Sentence, a second, that? Go ahead, councillor. Yes, you can.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, whereas municipalities should strive to provide accessible and convenient services to the public, whereas through the approval of the Strategic Plan 2024 to 2027 and beyond, the City of Thorold has prioritized the continued improvement of service delivery through service modernization. Whereas modernizing and expanding the availability of payment systems can enhance operational efficiency, improve customer service, and align with evolving public expectations. Whereas some municipal facilities currently do not accept credit and debit card payments, limiting ease of access for residents and visitors. And whereas expanding the availability of credit and debit card payment options would enhance customer service and reflect modern payment preferences. That staff be directed to report back to council on the feasibility and potential timeline to implement credit and debit card payment availabil, availability at all municipal facilities, and to implement portable debit and credit payment options for the use at special events, including the Community Market and Canada Day.
Thank you very much, and you can speak to them.
Okay, thank you. So I've done some, uh, research and due diligence. I've contacted other municipalities to discuss their payment options and provide a brief summary. Quite a few of the cities have their own online portal available to residents for them to go in and make payments with their debit or credit cards. They accept, uh, credit payments over the telephone. Um, when they have special events and they want to sell their merch at different events, uh, throughout the cities, they allow for, um, these portable machines. It also is, um, it measures further our strategic plan because it modernizes our services. It provides added convenience to the user. Uh, but a little note here, that while it would be providing the option on how to pay, we would not be losing revenue because the transactional cost. costs would be passed on to the user, and we would have to clearly communicate this to the public. So normally, there would be a user fee when you use your credit cards. Having point-of-sale machines at other city facilities such as Lock 7, the cemetery, and available at city-run events would support going cashless. This reduces the risk of having large amounts of cash on hand, and it takes the acceptance of payment at city events such as the markets, and we could do that ourselves instead of having other people take payments for merchandise that we're selling. This could also result in increased revenue and opportunities. It's possible that the city is losing revenue from people who may not wish to purchase products at city facilities or events because they don't carry cash or checks. And I'm not sure if people know that, but a lot of people don't carry checks anymore because the fee of ordering checks is, you know, between 80 and 100 bucks. A lot of people do carry their debit and credit machines. And because I have worked at the bank, I know that we often use third-party vendors that provide these machines, whether they're the portable ones or regular machines, to organizations, and they facilitate the use of payment service providers for their clients, and banks do their due diligence on ensuring service providers have security measures in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on this? Understand, this is asking for a staff report, we're not implementing this tonight, okay? Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, just for the staff knowledge then. So this would be an expense-neutral program, that all costs will be covered and paid for by, borne by those that are going to use that service?
I would say yes, that's what Counsel Decker's saying, and I'm sure the report will speak.
Yeah, that's, I just want to make sure that's the focus that we're looking at. So all the rental of the machine, the extra equipment, that's all built into the admin fee of the extra surcharge that's going to be applied for that, not just the transactional fee, but all of the other fees, so that there's no cost to the city. Just want to be clear on that, thank you.
No, no, it's a good point. Go ahead, Counsel DeRose.
Mr. Mayor, just to the counselor that brought it forward, Counsel Decker, was there any discussion with our finance department before this came forward?
Well, it's gonna, they're the one that's going to bring the report back. Well, the report will bring the feedback back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, go ahead, Counsel sentence.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, yeah, I'll support this. I was patient zero at the cemetery when I went out to get a memorial bench, and she asked for a check. I had to go find checks, so I like this. And what the T AAA does is, they tell them ahead of time, if you want to use a credit card, this is what's going to cost you, so I'll support this, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Counsel sentence, motion respecting Terry Fox Run. Counsel sentence.
Yep, I'm here, I'm just waiting for it to come up.
You have a second for that motion?
Yep, I can see it, I'm going to read it now.
Okay, okay.
Whereas the Terry Fox Run is a nationally recognized event that honors the legacy of Terry Fox and supports cancer research through community participation and fundraising. And whereas several municipalities have successfully hosted a Terry Fox Run with the support of volunteers, community organizations, and municipal resources. And whereas there is interest in exploring the feasibility of the city taking more active role in the organizing or supporting of the annual Terry Fox Run to ensure its continuity and accessibility for residents, now therefore be it resolved that the Corporation of the City of Thorold enacts the following. That city staff be directed to prepare a report outlining the financial implications, staffing resources, and logistical considerations required for the city to organize and host the annual Terry Fox Run beginning in 2026. May I speak to it?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So the organizers approached me, and not for this year, but they asked if, you know, I could look into this for the city running it. They're not going anywhere, they have all the roots, they have everything, but they're worried about in the future of having, you know, who's going to run it in the future, and they want to see if they can make this even bigger. So that's why I'm bringing this forward. Like I said, they'll all be there still, and I think this could be a really big and great thing for us, and Jim said he'd still cook the hot dogs, so I think we're all covered.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else want to speak to this? Go ahead, Counsel DeRose.
Yeah, I think, just, I don't know if we're being redundant here, because staff through in-kind play a big part of that day. So I don't know, can you just answer Counselor's sentence, what additional responsibilities would you need from staff? Just because they do a great job and help out as it is, so I just don't know, but I'll support, I'll support the motion, thank you.
Well, maybe Jacob could speak to it if he's on tonight, but I spoke to him about looking into this. I didn't, I asked him first, and he said he would love to run it, or love to look into running it, the potential of it. The timing is good when it's kind of slow after the market and everything, but I don't know what we, I'm not sure, I'm not sure of what we actually do as a city to support this group that's been running it from Mike Sharon to, you know, Cindy and Jim Dixon. Maybe Jacob can speak to it.
No, but that can come back in the report, Counsel DeRose.
I support it 100%.
And I think Jacob's the one that will be...
I don't think he's on, though.
Is he?
Yeah, he knows about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll support this 100%. He's my number-one hero. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Terry Fox, not Jacob.
I was wondering who you were talking about.
Supporting it, you know, we can all support it, you know, I'd support it too, but what the long-term implications might be of other organizations such as the Terry Fox Club, the March of Dimes, UNICEF, so on and so forth. We have a numerous amount of charities, staff do collections, we give in-kind. We, when the report comes back, we need to look at, is this a one-time thing, or if somebody else comes, are we going to say no to them? So we have to consider that, that if we're considering doing this, that we have to consider anybody that comes forward. We can't be prejudiced in a sense, and we ought to treat everybody with equality, diversity, you know, and the way the world is today, so we need to take that in a strong consideration where we may be taking ourselves down the road. I'll support it in principle, but we look what we could be getting into for long-term implications.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Dedevis, go ahead.
Yes, I would support this, too. I think being the city be involved, we could be, get the more of the community involvement, it can really grow into something large, and maybe we can offset some costs with sponsors and all kinds of things we can do to help this grow and get a city a sense of pride one day, but hopefully we'll get like a thousand people showing up for this walk and grow it into something spectacular. And if other charities do come, we can look at each of them on a case-by-case basis and try to help them all, if we can.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Counsel Decker.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think this is a great event. I know the firefighters come out and they do their support of the Terry Fox. I'm not sure if our city staff are as involved as the firefighters, but I know they're part of our staff, but I think this is something, I'm going to support it. I think it's something we should look into, and it could become part of our events down the road.
It's them, and the Thorold Pipe Band leads the parade, and so anyway, it's something we'll get back in a report, okay?
For sure.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Statement by Counsel, Counsel Hanley, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, we got a couple of them here. Mr. Mayor, actually, I get the world television the other day, and I was going through the television, and I seen these kids, they're rowing in Lithuania, and one of them happens to be from Thorold. So I got ahold of the mother, and sure enough, they were on their way home from Lithuania on Monday, and the resident is Lucas Riddle, as we all know Billy, that's his grandson, worked for the City of Thorold for a staff for a period of time, and he began rowing in high school at E.L. Crosley. And this summer, they trained in British Columbia with Row Canada, and they represented Canada recently in the under-19 men's pairing at the World Rowing Competition in Trakay, Lithuania. And Lucas and Ashton Kidd of St. Catharines actually finished fifth in the world in the finals, and they're in an overall world ranking of 11th in the world, so, so good, another great Thorold athlete. And the other one is in regards to the Education Foundation of Niagara. I did go to the tournament with three other individuals, Andrew Egger from Thorold, Corwin Daniels, and Jay Trushon, Trushon. We won the tournament, so we got to go back next year, we're defending champions, you know, I'd done a great job driving the golf cart, but we ended up winning the tournament. I brought three ringers with me, you might say. Actually, nobody else yet, Happy Gilmore was there, so nobody else registered for it, so I needed three golfers, so I got an owner of a golf course to come, and a couple other individuals, Corwin Daniels, you know, Karm Coaches socked with them, I think we'd done like 18 under, I made two putts in 18 halls. So other than that, yeah, so we're the defending champions, but I just wanted to let counsel know about the Education Foundation of Niagara is a nonprofit organization that supports children in need where government funding is not an option. They serve 99 schools across 12 municipalities here in Niagara, reaching over 38,000 students. It's led by a volunteer board of directors and currently employs just one staff member. Their programs are diverse and help students in many aspects of education and everyday life. We provide essentials such as warm clothing, school supplies, medical needs like eyewear, swimming lessons, and some of the parts of the projects are, they have a prom project where they outfit students with formal wear for prom graduation and semi-formals. They have a Warm Heart Program where they work with school administrators and teachers to identify families in need during the holidays, providing gifts, warm clothing, and food while keeping the process anonymous for the students. And they have a Swim to Survive that offers swimming lessons to all grades three students across the District School Board of Niagara through support from the Life Saving Society. They also provide bursaries and awards each year to students pursuing post-education. And Thorold's impact in recent years has supported many families at Richmond Street, Westmount, Prince Wales, and Thorold Secondary School. The staff and administration of Thorold Secondary have been particularly dedicated to supporting EFN's mission, including fundraising efforts like Walk-a-thon, and where he'd have the privilege to speak, where Mike has had to speak. So the gentleman that run this is Mike Lavalley, eh? His grandmother was Little Sykes, Ronnie Sykes, and his mother were all big-time, long-time volunteers in the city of Thorold, so he's continued the family tradition, and it was a great day had by all, great gifts. Our team also won the longest drive contest, we won the closest to the green, too, so we kind of cleaned up that day, but it was great all the ways around, and I'll wait for next year so we can defend the championship.
Thank you, Counsel Hanley. And just as you mentioned with the athlete side, and what I mentioned in the mayor's remarks, we've got a lot of athletes across multiple sports...
Oh, yes.
...in the city, and it's a lot...
I think at one time, you know, we were no more of us just for baseball and hockey, but we've become so diversified now, it's going to track and field, rowing, all aspects of sports.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Bylaws. Can I get a mover and a second for Bill 72, 2025 through 79, 2025, Counsel Decker and Counsel DeRose? So that's Bills 72, 2025 through 79, 2025. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Adjournment. There being no further business, this meeting is hereby adjourned at 8:53 PM. And I want to thank everybody, and...